I am glad that you came to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, your God, and the liberal liberty and justice for all.
And we will move on to two point O for the agenda approval. So, okay. Any, any conversation? Okay, so it's my second to accept the agenda statement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next one is three point O, which is visitors to address the board. The section here is for time for public comment on non-adjournant questions. And the board will not take any immediate action, but will refer concerns to a secret tenant and ask him to report to. Do we have any who reflect as they know?
If you know my name, you should be able to call them up. Start calling them often, you're saying? Ian?
Now there's some.
You stood on the line.
You were careful. You're asking to see.
They're like, they've said it all. This much of the year, you guys were the troublemakers.
I'm sorry.
Okay, alright.
Alright, then we're getting one to four point O, which is our community impact winners. On a monthly basis, the board presents awards to students, staff, and members of the public, and recognition of outstanding achievement in academics and service to the district. If anyone can come around and present a couple of those two little awards. If anybody will ever. Alright, so our first one is that little girl Haley family member. One of your parents. Alright, so throughout her time as a student intern, Haley has consistently demonstrated a genuine heart for us. She's out here all the time when I come into the. Her compassionate empathy maker, standout team member, contributing positively to the overall atmosphere of our central office. At me dedicated to class periods of day to her internship. Haley approaches her responsibilities with the utmost professionalism. Despite being a student, she treats her duties as if they were a real job, showcasing the level of maturity and responsibility that is beyond. Three oh. Don't forget to do that in the process. But this commitment not only reflects her work ethic, but also adds tremendous value to our office environment. Haley's excellence shines through in her ability to handle a variety of tasks, whether it's answering questions or addressing issues that come her way. She handles each situation with grace and confidence. Her confidence is evident in the way she approaches challenges, demonstrates a resilience that is truly inspiring. Haley has proven to be a great addition to our team. Her professionalism, dedication, and positive attitude make her an exemplary student intern. We want to express our appreciation and gratitude to Haley. Her impact goes beyond her role, leaving a lasting impression on everyone fortunate enough to work alongside her. Congratulations. Alright, our next really awesome person is our history impact winner, Mr. Scott. Alright, are you ready for all of this?
I guess.
So Scott is a dedicated teacher who prides himself on being reliable when needed, which is why he typically is the first one in the building in the morning and one of the last teachers to leave the building at the end of the day. His commitment to education goes beyond the typical classroom responsibilities, as evidenced by its membership of three esteemed science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics teachers over the past four years that are new to the facility. Scott's impact surpasses the traditional teacher-student relationship. His passion for learning is evident, especially when observing students completing projects or mastering intricate tasks with the tools in our steam classrooms. This infectious enthusiasm establishes an environment where students are not just involved, but motivated to dive into and understand the subjects before. Scott has a passion for learning and providing the best quality education to his students. This is evident from the most recent announcement that Scott has been awarded a maker space mini grant from Northwest Stamp House, which allows its recipients to create or expand their school maker spaces. We are grateful for Scott's passion and the expertise he brings to St. Helens Middle School. He is a new valuable member of our team and his dedication and commitment to St. Helens Middle School and its students are commendable. Alright. And we have one more. This is our community impact award winner, Shawn. You don't have to say this is one of my kids, you guys.
No, my kid, my kid.
Alright, so community impact. This is this lady right here, this is this breaks out between the entire community now. Since the city of St. Helens and the St. Helens School District first joined forces as community partners in 2018, Shawn has been driving, been a driving force and an integral member of our successful partnership between the two. With a shared vision to provide a much needed streamlined recreational program to the St. Helens community, Shawn embossed herself in creating accessible programming for students and community members. In 2023, this partnership led to the allocation of a one year, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars in funding for the Twenty First Century Community Learning Center after school program, which will support the program for the next five years in our community and ensuring its continued growth and impact. This monumental achievement would not have been possible without the vision and dedication of Shawn Dugan and former director Matt Doyle, who spearheaded the grant writing process. She is a bright light in the St. Helens community and has a heart for bringing its members together and building a sense of community. We want to express our profound gratitude to Shawn Dugan for her unwavering commitment and dedication to the St. Helens community, her positive impact, and her heartfelt efforts to foster a sense of community among all of our St. Helens residents. Congratulations. Alright, thanks. Okay, so now we are going to one to five point O, which is our consent. You're gonna move to second to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Okay, then we're going to move on to six point O, news business, which is St. Helens High School ASB report.
Um, no, she hasn't been prompted by the thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you, are you good for this?
Okay.
I'm ready.
Well, uh, welcome everybody, this is quite the people here, so. Go ahead and get into our ASB report. We're gonna go ahead and start with choir, so Portlanders had their OLA concert canceled due to the snow and ice storm along with so much of other things that people had canceled. Um, but they do have a makeup concert with professional Portland choirs tonight, which is where Brooke is, I presume. Um, and it is at the Pacific Youth Corral, and so they are all there, which is really exciting. And then wrestling has their senior night, January twenty-third, so that was yesterday. And it's been a very successful season so far for both boys and girls. And then winter ball is this Saturday, January twenty-seventh. It is the second dance of the year, all in homecoming. And it is twenty-five dollars with ASB, thirty without. And the tickets are still virtually full, purchasable in touch base for from Mrs. P in the lion's den. Um, that all ends tomorrow. And then we have our class competition, so this is what I've been heading up at school. And so it's our first time using what we call spirit. So we give each class, or all of the classes each week, a different challenge to work on, to try and improve their school spirit. So the first week was social media posts. We had a bit of a struggle with that, so we turned it into fill out a Google form with your favorite thing about winter, and then we tallied up and took percentages of the participation of each grade and from there to make a score sheet of it. So then the second week, which was supposed to be last week with the clothing drive, we moved that to this week. And currently we have our bins practically full of clothes that are being donated to the family resource center. And then we just finished this, but we also had dress up days this past week, where each day if students were dressed up, they could come to a table at the lion's den and bring themselves in their awesome outfits and we tallied them up. And so currently the scores are three hundred and seventy-five points for the seniors, two hundred and twenty-five for freshmen and sophomores, and one seventy-five for the juniors. And so once this clothing drive finishes out this Friday, we'll have our final scores and the class that makes it extended hour long. So we're really excited to make the event happen. Starting here pretty soon. And then NHS and leadership partnered for the clothing drive, so that way we could help out with that. And again, that's part of our winter ball class comp. And so what's next? Well, we have prom, it's going to be May eleventh, twenty twenty-four, seven to ten PM at Castaway Portland. And the theme dance ticket information, that is all to come later. And that is what we have so far, so thank you for tuning in.
Okay, well then we're gonna go to six point two, is our story. Which direction are we going first?
Let's, let's start with the power.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. It is that time of year where my life becomes really crazy and hectic, but we've got all of our kindergarten transition events starting, so. The second weekend of February, we start our first Ready Freddy event, so all the flyers are starting to go out. And this week, my assistant is passing all the local businesses and stuff, and she's already started with a bunch of those centers to get it out to the kids that we know of in large groups. And so we've already started having parents signing up. We have a Ready Freddy event at each of the elementary schools this year, so one in February, one in March, one in April, and then we're starting to plan, you're welcome. And we're gonna do our family barbecue again, doing the drive and ding again, because it was a huge success last year and the kids loved having their little boxes, so we've got that set within. Busy planning all of those and getting it worded out to all of our incoming kinder families. This week and next week, our preschoolers are heading to Omsi to learn about workers. And so they're very excited, they just get excited during the bus. And so that's just a active focus. And yes, bus drivers love being sure they live in eighteen car seats. I usually go up there. Um, and then our last thing is our, we had our first big Shell family engagement night. Uh, last night, we had a snowman theme, wired family made a snowman and got to bring it in. And then there were eleven different activities set up for the families, and we served them dinner as well. And so they got to mingle with each other, scale the teachers, all of my staff participated in it last night. And we had lots of families from every school come out to participate. We, they really loved it, and so I put out a questionnaire about a month ago, and we've been getting back responses. And I let them vote on what they want our next one to be, and so they voted that the next one is going to be a global dance party. And so for our toddlers and preschoolers, so I've got us, one of our teachers, her husband is a local DJ, so he agreed with him and it's highlights and music and everything for the kids that night. So we're gonna have ourselves a little party in March, so we're planning that date right next to. That's where we're at with all of our programs.
Hi, we're Debbie. Good evening, everyone, if you can hear me. I'm Allison, principal of the pride. I took a few notes because I always forget when I get up. I kind of like to follow the three, you know, areas of focus for us, so connection belonging, I'll start there. Uh, we've, this whole month has been looking on the character trait honesty. And it's kind of one of my favorite, I always tell the kids the story about my fifth grade teacher, who was one of the guys who had a banner that said what integrity was, and we teach them the new vocabulary, honesty, and what that means for them and how that shows up in being a truth teller in kindergarten, all the way to doing what's right when no one's around, we have integrity in fifth grade. Um, and so that's been really fun, along with a campaign on friendship. So thinking about helping support students, making connections with each other, finding new friends. What have you noticed about others? And so in terms of helping our students build that connection, that's kind of been our areas of focus. Um, this month of January, it's been a little adjusted, you know, there we go. Um, and so our community events, many of them have been postponed or moved forward. So we're kind of looking forward to some community events coming up. Um, February ninth is our read aloud day. And we have some high school students coming in the following week to do some read alouts with our students. And then that night on Friday, uh, we're gonna do a Zoom event. Um, and just how we have some guest readers coming in and kids can zoom in with their jammies and a, and a stuffy and have a nice kind of bedtime story before they go to bed at seven, right, on a Friday night. Um, and in terms of achievements, uh, I'm very excited about my staff, uh, the work that we've done with RTI and really focusing on tier one this year and what's happening structurally in the classroom that's really strong has been a focus. And so on February seventh, we have a trainer coming in from Abbott that's gonna help us with focus note taking and training our teachers on how to do that from kindergarten through fifth grade and what that looks like at all of those different levels. I think that that's the hardest thing for us to picture. Um, and then what we're working on, I'll be honest, it's tardies right now. Our attendance is strong, ninety percent is where we're sitting. Um, but I think our tardies in the morning, it's, we have a pretty long line that's tricking down the door. So it's something we've been talking about as a care team and focusing on maybe some phone calls to families and some parent messaging about routines in the morning and offering help, helping them help get those in the door on time every day, ready to start the day. So, um, that's something we're working on, it's up, everybody.
Good evening, Sherry Martin, Melissa Larrick. Um, we have plenty of things going on right now, but wanted to share with you some real highlights. The first one would be some work that our guiding coalition is doing, and it is pretty exciting news. Um, they have kind of come back and shared with me a little bit about as we're doing our PLT, professional learning teams work, and going through our cycles and looking at our new curriculum and really doing the planning, um, kind of the three factors. We want to dig in more and we want to get more into the cycle. Instead of doing this one Wednesday a month, we want to be digging into this too. And so that is really excellent news, and it just kind of shows that we are moving the dial on the work that we've been doing. So that's been very exciting. Another exciting piece is our playground and the changes that are happening there. Um, it's fantastic, kids are having a great time watching machinery and seeing all the things that are happening. But we're very excited about the new play structure, uh, things that are going in. And it doesn't necessarily seem so thrilling to everyone, but it is a big, um, there's a lot of talk in the lunchroom. We'll be looking at the pictures and everyone's going to be excited about, um, what that will bring. And also starting to have conversations about how do we keep our playground in the best condition with our new equipment? So it's fun to listen to our students who are starting to talk about how do we keep, um, things happening to our equipment when we're not on the playground or on the weekends and those things. So we're gonna start kind of working with our fourth and fifth graders to be kind of talking about what are some strategies you could have that we need to look at? Because that is, they're taking some pride in some, knowing that something new is coming. And then, um, we are in the midst of planning our family reading night, which will be a big school event. And so we're looking forward to starting to plan that and figure out with that night, we'll have some different stations. You could, you know, when that gets closer about what we'll be doing in our theme, but we're very excited about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm Heidi Green, you know, this is where it's like, we're just doing something with the team. Um, but we're gonna speak to what we know is happening, obviously. Um, we have a lot of fun things happening. Today was our first grand watch that I've had a chance to experience. You know, like the first ones in November, just with the hand thing, that's when the whole school gathers in the gym. And you have your older students, I have a group of struggling students, kindergarten to fifth grade, and they are together weekly and they share in a learning opportunity and a community building app. But today, every watch was together in the gym. So we have that going on, um, some additions, some new things since I've been there this month. The Juarez Club came to all our third graders and brought the sources. So they're having a fun time finding synonyms and expressions. We also, um, our fifth graders are now in charge of morning announcements. Gretchen Ramos has supported that, we write about the practices with them, but they are excited to be able to speak into the microphone each morning. The Columbia City PTO is busy and their current fundraiser right now is called the Penny War. What's unlike just a coin drive in that the silver coins and dollars count for their amount, but pennies count against. So the object is to put pennies into other people's jars to take their, their total down. So the students are having a really fun time to see who has the most and who they're gonna target their fees for. And Elizabeth wants to share about it after school program.
So we started the, um, after school program that gives that partnership with the St. Helens Park and Rec. And, um, that started January eighth, and we started with a cohort of twenty students, and then there was a little bit of waiting list. So because of the success of the twenty students that they had, it actually didn't open that up. And I think they're further open that up. It has, um, really created an environment that encourages students to try new things. And that's one of the things, that's one of the goals that they were looking for. So that is started, they're starting to see that happen. And, um, they just really had a really, the Parks and Rec has had a really great transition with starting that with the cafeteria, the nutrition services that are there, and, um, some of the teachers that are working with that. So it's been a really great opportunity and we're excited to see it grow and, and improve. So, yeah.
I'm gonna use that when I look in.
So it's all, I'm excited to share some of the fun things that we have coming up here at the school. Uh, we have a evening dance, this meeting is our first, and we'll need, we need dance of the year, we do want to hear. Uh, it's a good opportunity for kids to kind of be ready for the high school dances. Uh, Lucy's actually spearheading this with our preschool students and is working with the leadership through her kids and kind of teaching them the skills, flying and organizing and getting things ready together. So it's next Thursday, five thirty-seven, uh, at the meeting. Uh, also, we're preparing for an outdoor school, which will be in March, and we need today to kind of work on some of the plans. Uh, there's a lot of excitement from one of the sixth graders and sixth grade students, uh, about outdoor schooling. This year we'll be going to two camps, which are going to connect close to each other, which will be nice. Last year we ended up sitting in a big camp by Springfield, then another over at the coast. Uh, this year we'll be using, uh, camp from Meridwater and Repriver, so that's much better.
And are we showing any high schoolers to be counselors?
I didn't know, they didn't mention that today at the meeting.
They were at the pre-meeting at the high school, so it's, they might.
Half the audience have. And I want to, uh, just give an RTI update. Uh, our, we have a RTI coach that we hired this year at the middle school. Uh, and that was just a really good program, uh, meaning, uh, professional development of Wednesdays about, uh, tier one classroom behavior supports and interventions for students. Uh, we've done that for two different Wednesdays, we have one more Wednesday coming up. We'll finalize the tier one supports for behavior, and then we're gonna start moving into, uh, tier one classroom supports on academics in our classrooms. But speaking of academics, we did start a tier three, which is our most intensive, uh, level of support for students. But we started a tier three half class in start quarter two. Uh, I'm not sure how many kids we had in there, uh, not very many, I think it's around twenty-four. Uh, but we do have one student who is already very dedicated on that one year. So she's going to make intensive supports around foundations of this. Uh, and so that's really exciting to see, uh, and we're just seeing a lot of progress for students too. Not only with their grades, but like just the comfort level. Feelings between us, that's really exciting. That's all I have. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, hello, good evening, it's John.
Pretty cool.
Who's snow again, good to see. Um, Ron Hurnley, principal at Plymouth High School. Few things I'd like to share, we, we had our orientation last evening and it was a success. We had eighteen, I believe twenty-one of our, um, are expected or hoped for, new students and families show up, so that was very good. They were very engaged, uh, more than normal, um, the students that were there. Um, it really stood out how excited they were to, um, have this opportunity and move forward and become students at our schools, so that was very cool. We have five graduating, uh, next week at the end of quarter two, which is also awesome. Um, three of those five are early grads, so, um, very exciting for them to finish up and move on. It was really neat to be pretty in the right space and time for a young lady who thought she had a lot longer road ahead of her, and then when it hit her, she realized that, next quarter she's done. So it was a pretty, pretty cool transition from tears to joy, uh, very unique. We have hired a special education case manager, we've gone through a couple since, uh, last year. So, um, she, her name is Holly Rhodes, and she is just starting to get her ledge. She started this week in full. And, uh, very excited to jump right in and start serving her students. She's, um, very well equipped with her knowledge and her experience and tools and resources that she uses. So, uh, really need to bring her on as new staff. Um, a couple of things that we're looking at in the future, we continue to expand our ERUP program. We have, um, several, um, college visits coming up. Um, and I believe we have military. Um and I believe we have military and two college visits to the to our school to come and visit during months time as well. So we're trying to have a revolving door of opportunities for students to learn about post-high school. We also will soon have a science teacher. Um we have been without a permanent science teacher so far. And young lady who are coming from Phoenix, Arizona will be joining us and um very soon been in contact with her and her agency daily. Uh she was trying to get here by tomorrow, which I kept thinking it's just. Uh I just wanted to see that happen because it was possible to uh contact her today that she'll be at least Friday if not next week. Because certainly things take time. So gonna be transitioning her um into that new role and utilizing her first few days next week. Just sequester her and get her the materials so she can learn and be really ready to step in and take over. We've had an Apex uh computer-based uh program in that science room for a little while now. It is not the way we might go, teachers, adults and kids alike understand the frustrations that have come from it. And um it's just gonna be great to have a science teacher in there. She's a a project-based person that likes to do a lot. Team things, projects, so it's 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 exciting to have a full staff. So thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. Martin Heeman, uh principal of Virtual Academy. Like to start out by saying we had our first Rotary Student of the Month that we recognized. Uh first one ever is that correct, Mr. Docos? Thank you. Um Justin Johnson. He was a student who when he came to us was having a lot of challenges and he just thrived in the online um environment to where he is. Really participating in all classes and passing. He's super excited to graduate and walk um at St. Helms High School. And it is to follow and move on to the next phase of his life. And we had our open house last night. Uh the turnout wasn't what we had hoped, but it's um not. Right, it's understandable based on the fact that we had to cancel due to the snow and um kind of the late notice of getting going, but. The people who did attend, it was well um three seat and the feedback was great. And in fact, I I looked today and just got a freshman student that was asking such high-level questions. And then being so engaged with taking ownership of her learning that she actually got a compliment from another parent who attended a informational event. Um she is actually signed up for Virtual Academy. Um we've also had another home school family come back um to the district to give a mention of the high school options that we're having. We are starting to forecast uh for second semester and we I've sent out the signup sheet to students today. We've already had four people sign up or choose their electives. Um just trying to give students more choice in their electives instead of just having them be assigned to them. And then we're also uh starting to implement um homeroom class. And that homeroom class is gonna be a platform for increasing um student connections, engagement, um SEL. As well as a platform for us to put to um work with students on uh. Requirements for O D B, like the tribal history, share history curriculum, but also still our district have to. That is what we're currently supporting. Have any questions? Does anybody from the front row have any questions?
It's very, very, thank you.
How about? Good evening. I'm Paul Hilton, this is the principal at high school. Um I want to start off by uh mentioning that we just had inter sessions this last Saturday. Uh which is a time for students to come and get extra support in classes and we had seventy-seven students attend, which was very exciting because I think. It would have been even larger uh if we had had school previous stage really recruited, but I was excited to see seventy-seven students. Most of them stayed the entire day, which was from nine to three, so very exciting news on that. Um we also have started um rolling out um our ed efficiency program, which is where students are able to. Choose a particular class um that they will attend for intervention. So next semester, we will have eight academic courses and then our enrichment and intervention will move to um the middle of the day, a half hour. Chunk of time and we've started having students try that out and um it's gone very well. Uh it's worked, there haven't been a lot of hiccups and um students have gone to their classes without a hitch, so I think that's gonna be very exciting. Um and we're also in the midst of recruiting and growing our avenue program, so really targeting specific students um that we think would be appropriate for the program. And um uh finally, uh I was supposed to say something and I slipped my mind. Uh I didn't write it down. Uh but the with the weather, we slightly shifted. Um but we made sure that no students were impacted as far as being able to um take finals and whatnot. So shifting, staying on on task with the standards, but um not penalizing them, that we love us. And that's it. Thank you.
Actually, I think the snow was brought on by a few seniors. Do whatever it takes to delay it.
I didn't see any phone calls saying you gotta kiss.
I don't know. All right. Do you have anybody else? That's it?
That's it.
Guys, take it off. Well, then I will now turn it over to six point three, which is our super again.
Yeah, I got two items and the first one um is board appreciation. So January is board appreciation month. Um I think we give you a little bit of swag. We have each school is gonna recognize our board members, but before we do that. Um I think it's important to just note for public to hear me say how blessed we are to have so a strong board. And if it would pass three bonds, that doesn't happen unless there's a lot of trust for the community in the school board. What you bring to the table and the way you represent our community uh is pretty amazing. It's not, it's not common for school boards to function the way that just their functions. And what you bring to the table helps move all of our schools forward, supporting our children. And just the constant drive to for us to all the better. I think that's really important and the focus on caring for students that each one bring to table. So Mark, thank you for that. I feel very lucky to have a team to work with.
I'm trying to think of best to call. I think we can just start by uh. Let's have, and I forgot right then, the team that's gonna recognize Lucy at the end of the spokesman. And we'll just go, we have to go around the floor. So Lucy, on behalf of the Virtual Academy, Plymouth High School and the office of the superintendent. We have a card that our staff assigned and there's a gift for you because we kind of went behind your back and said, shoot, boss. And we know that you're going off to college, so we have a little gift party here to help you on your journey next year.
And I just want to say thank you for all the work and how you present and represent. It's uh wonderful. So thank you very much.
Thank you on behalf of Columbia City staff and students and we formally like to invite you to the next grand lodge. I believe it's two weeks from today. Twelve fifteen to twelve forty-five.
On behalf of McBride Elementary, we are recognizing Melanie. Melanie, thank you so much. Uh we have a really cool, but it's the gift that keeps on giving us like that little bell. So you open this up. Yeah.
Waiting for the thing to sprout.
And there's one where it came from. We have some flowers market and um this is kind of, I woke up pretty early in the morning and so where did it go? My haiku is gone. Um I write haikus for my staff from time to time because they're on my mind. Oh, and I lost it, Melanie. I guess I'll have to read it to you tomorrow morning. So.
It was hard to like say thank you for all of your work and so we've got several things for you. And our theme for our pictures was two thumbs up. And so one would be a little book that was made with pictures of our students and a shirt. And then um our, one of our first grade classes, Moses, wanted to do a special poster, special three. Thank you, Bron.
Thank you. We are honored to thank Kelly Smith. I think you've been on the board just about as long as I do. Like that long time. Would you, my most favorite thing is your new name. So thank you on behalf. Thank you behalf of students and staff.
And the high school was to recognize and um thank Phil for all of your service and um also to invite you to an upcoming engineering event. Um that'll get you the specific dates too. And also um next board meeting, we will have the choir here to sing for you. They just got rescheduled because of the snow and that's why we think. So thank you so much.
But again, uh greatly appreciate all of your work and time, the volunteer time that you put in to this course. Pretty amazing. So thank you. All right, now we're ready for six point three point two.
I'm ready, yeah.
Six point three point two is the proposed, proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty-five bell schedule. Includes elementary schools from seven forty-five to two fifteen, St. Helms Middle School eight thirty to three, and St. Helms High School eight twenty to three. And schedules.
Um there's a place seven point oh for visitors who drive to the board on agenda items. So if you have any comment about how this would affect you and you want to fill out a comment.
The time.
What do you have to add? Okay, don't worry. But I will now turn it over to you. Just kidding.
Bill, well, it's, we spent significant amount of time. Uh we switched, we switched our bell schedules. Um last year, the board said, yes, we'll give this a try. We made some adjustments um to try to increase. Plan time at the elementary level and also reduce um early morning pickups for elementary and address. Um issues at the middle school where buses were taking forty-plus minutes to pick up students after school. So we made some adjustments to the bell schedule um as a board who's directed us. We'll do it for this year in the fall. We want to have some reports. We also then want to have a discussion and possibly change those to then uh ser- community survey. We've had a transportation audit. Uh and then we've had discussion at our last work session with transportation. Um we did talk about how with limited resources, um there's no perfect schedule. And so this was the schedule that as a board, the consensus was the best that we could do, given. Resources, community, topography, uh and that sort of kind of landed. So the plan is this is like a second meeting and we'll have a final reading at the next board meeting. Uh where the board will make a decision from the quarter. So this is an opportunity for that public discussion. We wanted to make sure that um this was in the agenda because the agenda's published. And so that would provide folks who are concerned an opportunity to see what the times were that we're in. So with that, I will open it up for discussion.
One thing that I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page on is um because I wasn't sure the last time. But on the elementary schools part where it says seven forty-five, a lot of people think about that that's the drop-off time. But that will actually be being start time rather than the eight o'clock. So that it does make the time the right amount of hours because people are still thinking eight o'clock. It's not okay. So just want to make sure you're all new that kids will actually be ready by seven thirty rather than seven forty-five. For them to be able to pull off buses, getting back and getting all the middle school, high schoolers back to school at their time.
And there's our time of what time right now?
They, well, you can't wait for me if I'm show up at seven thirty-five or anything.
And yeah, and we have a lot, we have notable tardies right now.
At one school?
Take care of not, I don't think it's gonna matter where you go, wait, no matter what.
Would you like to have the elementary principals here tell me and speak for that?
I did like, I am not in favor of continuing anyone's start before eight o'clock. So I really like to make sure that we're, yes, giving an opinion, especially from anyone that was such.
Could, could we have um the two of you come up and?
Okay, actually, um I brought some data and I went to purposes, I think, I think for us, this is a solvable challenge. I think it, we are always presented with challenge in our, in our day, so I just thought I want you to have a lay of the land. Um compared from last year, and I think we had this presentation prior, we had um the the woman from. Did this to the sixth of that last week or last, anyway, oh, thank you so much. Um but we have on average twenty-two point six tardies last year on a daily average. Uh and this year we're averaging about forty-one, forty-two tardies on on the day. So um so it could impact that, but we haven't, we haven't yet even really attempted a campaign or any kind of real instructional uh targeted work to address it. So um I think we're gonna have challenges when we have the, that's the reality. And I would say I don't have our numbers and I will get this for you, but I would say that that is a couple of right ones. Wherein we're having kids come in and party, we're having about forty to fifty. Um and again, um we just can get our newsletter and try to address it that way. Reminder, so kind of doing that stuff. We have our morning clock up, our socks are really practicing the importance of being. Um it's a long time, but we would have to do some road campaigns for that um to keep that number of them increasing. But if you can be done, it's just gonna take a little bit.
Sure.
So just as a hypothesis, that's a good science word. Do you feel that potentially this increase in tardies is due to the fact that. Commuting parents have left for work and their kids are now getting secondary transport, secondary care or self-care to get to school?
I can speak for our, our students, most of the students that we have that are in this forty-one, forty-two average. I can speak for our, our students. Most of the students that we have that are in this forty-one, forty-two average a day are being brought to school by parents. They're on, they're on.
So that would not be about.
Yeah, and that would be.
That's, that's the reason I asked the question. What was last year's bell schedule compared to this year's? Some was last year earlier.
Last year was later. This year's has an earlier start time for the elementary. Yes, doors open eight oh five for breakfast. Students in the building and then start of the day is eight twenty. And now we're, we're opening doors at seven forty-five and we need to start right.
I think it might be helpful to have Heidi, like these four chairs up.
Yeah, she's been around.
This is. That's, we'll need to have, well, there's a microphone.
Like now you're counting on me to like.
You don't have to go over and see if it just talked.
So the reason why I've asked Heidi to join the team is that schedule, I believe, is the same schedule that the district had four years ago.
Yes.
So you could speak your experience on that.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we were there for a long time. We lived at opening doors at seven twenty-five, but it was hard. Hard for community staff, lots of tardies. The highlighters, remember the highlighters? That was the campaign for that elementary school, lots of campaigns. And then when we changed to the later start. I don't, I think when you attend that eight o'clock hour and it kind of is a magic number. And I've been out of the conversation where these changes came from and maybe I just didn't hear all of that. Keith and I were talking and we've been involved in some discussions when the changes were made for last full year. But I was just, I know there'd been a survey set out to the community. But who was the organization that came up with those numbers that harboring the bus company? Again, like in past, yeah.
When they, when they felt when we're best and when kids coming together, combinations.
Yeah, they provided the relate, they provided the relationship of standing. Now that I'm a commuter to Columbia City, because usually I just walk to McBride, but I actually drive to Columbia City. Seeing kids outside standing on Pittsburgh Road in the dark. I was like, oh. Been a little surprise to me and experience for me as well.
Danny, would you like to join?
More chairs.
As, as far as early learning goes, because the mic's moving. So, so every time we make elementary earlier, like our aftercare still stays the same. So like my teachers, right now, when we made, started seven or eight, I have to pay my teachers fifteen minutes of overtime. Like one, my closing teacher that closes till four thirty. And then if we do that, then she's gonna be in a half hour every single day because I have to have all of my teachers there when we open the doors. And so I either have to continue paying them even more overtime every day, or we have to start closing earlier, move our close time to four o'clock because I, it just peaks. As we go up, my staff moves to shift their schedules too. So you kind of take into consideration, if we want our teachers to be able to use this, then I need to I want them to be able to have the time after school and not rush to come get their kids. But if our teachers have to stay late, then constantly process overtime on a daily basis. Teachers are commuting by hours a day. Just wanted to mention that part that people don't realize, like it comes corner, I have teeth that I can use before school to kind of cover that and the use after school. But in my elementary, I don't have the abilities, I have to have myself there.
Just to let you know too, the one things that I did, I did talk to the bus drivers about, you know, what would it take for us? Actually, almost have them all been on the bus. Multiple buses, not just, you know, throwing them all together, but maybe the high school, middle school one bus analogy, but at the same time later, so that they can it's exactly double the amount of buses that we currently have to be able to do that. We don't. And to even the availability of getting that many more buses would probably take over a year's time for them to even get the buses. Even if we all chose to add that many buses. So, so the bad part is this, with the amount of kids having different distances that we have to go. We've got to have the two rounds. So either somebody's early, somebody's late, or everybody's later and later and later. I mean, so that's been so difficult.
The problem with all the buses leaving at the same time is that drivers are working much shorter hours. And then they don't work for you anymore. So you have fifty buses, ten drivers. It doesn't really help you. You have to be able to staff, as you're well aware, that you get down to a certain number of hours. The same thing I think Mel mentioned for after school care. If the elementary gets out late enough, then the after school providers can't staff because their people are only working two hours a day and it's not worth coming to.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and that's a, that's a, that's an issue. I think Monkey Tree experienced that, some of the other ones have. So it's not just a simple thing of get up early, go to school. It's far more complex in that there's what happens after school, the other agencies, the other groups, the other people that are impacted in large numbers. When we look at my own house, my own things, I have my own desires. But when we look at the overall community and what's actually functional, it's sometimes not what we want, it's what we can do. And, and there's, there's a real difference here. That's where the challenge is, is where do we draw the difference between practical reality and civility? And those are just, just being humane for, for families and what's going on. So there are those challenges. And I know that, that commuter parents often, they would like to just have that early because they don't have to worry about before school care. And they, elementary kids, you can put them to bed at seven, you can put them to bed at seven o'clock. High school kids, well, good luck at putting them to bed. So there's just a difference in those things and how, how do we balance it? We don't have all the creative answers. But there are, it's it's more before school care, after school care, like you mentioned. Teacher prep time, having to get up early. There's no way in the world I would teach elementary school at seven forty-five in the morning because I set my alarm that early. But I did live through the eight twenty to three o'clock schedule or three, eight, eight twenty to three twenty schedule for a long, long time. These are not new schedules. We've tried, tried to improve on what we had. But it seems like after a while, we go back to, well, you know, there's a reason why they did that before. And we have to sometimes rediscover what worked before. But it may not be too different today than it was forty, fifty years ago for me.
And we could add buses, but they did tell us that it would be like a sixty-eight month process. So we'd be looking down the road. We did have one comment, I can even per email that asked us to just maintain that as both for at least two years and not change anything yet. Where, and that's what I ended up saying at our last meeting, like, well, then let's not change it. Let's just make it a little bit tighter. And I think that we could pull the middle school time down to the eight thirty time and that four even eight forty, and then leave everything else where it's at. And that might satisfy a lot of issues right now.
You said they do not make.
Yeah, just speaking of the experience of going through the old schedule and the new schedule as a current student. I've seen the benefits and difficulties equally. And I know all the, all the school are sitting in this room can attest to the same thing. And I just remember like, there's no way to satisfy everyone. That's, that's one of the hardest parts is like whenever I'm working with all these wonderful people, I just can, I see how much they want to help everyone and I want to help everyone too, but the reality is that someone's always going to be cut short a little bit. And looking at the just the difficulty of again, like having those kids standing in the dark. Having an aftercare, like after school can being cut short or being extended, having to pay workers. And then also not even accounting for high schoolers and their schedules as well, with sporting events and getting up earlier going getting up late, whether it's middle school or high school. So all these different aspects play into such a larger role and kind of it's able to look at and not even just our school district, but also scat booths. So it's, like, it's not even just affecting us, it's also affects them. So whenever I looked at this, like I saw kind of difficulties behind like tardies being a lot more. Cause I remember being one of the tardies and, but I also am not. But I also, I just, I remember like, I mean, looking at that, I know that there's definitely difficulties in switching to it. And I know everyone's tired of switching schedules, but every time I look at that, I just think that's the one that makes sense to me. Your high schoolers, yes, they're still getting to like school. They're getting school a little bit later so they get to sleep in longer. But if we were to keep it at the seven forty-five, I mean, I just know I've been with devoted to sports. You get home later and later. And if you have to keep getting up earlier and earlier, it really affects you. With elementary, you're not really doing sports unless you do club sports. And even those don't go past like six o'clock at night. And so I don't know, I just look at it and I think, how can we best, I mean, one of the most important things that was accounted for, the sleep schedule. How can we best support the sleep schedule, best support the staff? Not just in the school district, but also outside of the school. And I just, every time like we looked at it, just they have the thing. It's like, well, this kind of answers it. And even with the kids standing out in the dark, one of the things I thought of was, well, if parents have to get to work at a certain time, wouldn't it be better if they can sit there watching their kid in the dark? And know that they're getting on the bus rather than leaving them in the dark anyways because of how they like saying, they're still gonna be sitting out in the dark even if school starts at eight, right? And so that was kind of like the concern and it's never raised a situation. It was just. Yeah, that's my two cents.
Well said.
So the.
Can we, all drugs?
So you're saying that commuters aren't necessarily the parts that are struggling already. To me, that's made as a commuter to Portland, there is a specific time of my life I have to. It doesn't matter what this district does, I have to make this choice to do this thing. So if you're saying it's not that really, then to me, that's an opportunity that we have locals that we can either support education, we can do any number of things to help them. If it's not the ones that happen at a certain time, but I think for the follow-up. What's happened? Because if it's, you know, fifteen minutes and obviously we can get twenty more students per day. Then there may be some educational opportunities or resource incentives, I mean, one of those types of things.
Just to clarify too, overall, our attendance per se at McBride is very strong. And so people are getting to school becoming late. The other thing I do think that's interesting about this is that extra fifteen minutes, it makes our sandbox for how we position supports and classes a little bit bigger, which is kind of a nice little.
You're talking about the seven thirty to seven forty-five window having.
Seven forty-five to two fifteen.
Is that, is that, it's just, that's a longer date for you?
Fifteen minutes longer. Right now, we dismiss that two fifteen.
The other thing I was gonna say is to Lucy's points, no matter what we do, our geographic region sits in a area where certain times we're getting seven hours of daylight. And it doesn't matter what we do last year. So unless we switch to a year-round school system, where we're starting to take advantage of that summary approach. I don't know that that is going to be able to shift some of that narrative. I know we, we took this on last year specifically because I had a point that would people that were identified to talk about all this stuff, make this decision, maybe got your recommendation, put it forward. And the community had some conversations about it. So we said, let's try it for a year and see what happens. So this is where that follow-up is and, you know, the, how that comments about leaving it for a year. I mean, that is a component as well of, we came up with this because after talking to the bus company and about the rest of this, this was kind of the most optimal of things. But it was also in response to a set of community members saying, what we've changed here is just for a different space. So returning to that, right? But the reality is, if I were to want to, sorry, I do want to line here and.
Can we allow our own folks to reach out? We want to hear from.
Do we want to bring how they feel not getting packed just because they, they gather that we're starting to lose lanes?
This new bell schedule, I think it's been hard for us to have meetings, IP meetings, faculty board meetings, staff meetings in the afternoons. The middle school, that teacher contact day currently goes from eight to four at the middle school. And the student contact time is nine to three thirty. It's hard to have meetings in the morning with your parents there at eight o'clock and then then we're asking teachers to stay after their contact time to, to meetings. It's been tough.
How's the afternoon? One thing that we're trying.
Oh, the busings? Yeah, the busings are a lot better. We can get them out later, probably in fifteen, twenty minutes. And buses are arriving in five, about forty minutes late. Correct. Almost every bus is out there already lined up when school gets out. And then we usually have just one class set. We're waiting for people to solve that problem creatively.
The percentage population is going to be lower anyway compared to an elementary school, but how many tardies per se would you have average?
That's where you're gonna ask me next, like, you don't have any. So, yeah, I don't even want to, like, I think it feels just not the same. Every day there's a handful of kids that are just kind of coming in to the office area. Yeah, you're floating in the school office. And there are usually not like lines, I don't know, but there might be like five or six kids up in the student pool area.
Our team are just a bit the same students who are late each day.
Yes, they're similar students.
And I actually was gonna ask that same question of you guys, am I right? Because I know that at McBride in the morning too, I can pretty much almost tell you by name anymore who's gonna come late in the morning. Tell them to be there.
It's not really a clock, it's a, that's the way it is, for whatever reason, and their life schedule is something.
I would say like in the morning, I don't see a huge number of tardies. I also don't have the data. I feel like more what we're struggling with is the kids all come on bus. And then sometimes they walk over to St. Way and then that's when they get late, but they're there. The first bus rolls in about, yeah, the first bus rolls in at seven AM. And I mean, we, we have, most of our students are there. We have the few that come late. But I don't see, what I would assume by having such an early start time, that it would be chronic, that those, the high schoolers get there.
I know your ball players last night got home at eleven for the boys and the girls at some ridiculous activity night probably, but and when you get a couple of road games in the same week. Shoot, that was just at Seaside. When you go and come over to tell them, look, it's another forty-five minutes. So these things are real challenges then to be there at that hour. Uh, these things are real challenges than to be there at that hour in the morning. Another thing as for the subjects like. Uh, swing choir and jazz band that have. Zero period, they're having to be there in the middle of the night, you talked about it early, uh. Those are, those are tough, and if they're also involved in a sport, then you expect to stay as awake and take a test at two o'clock in the afternoon. Those, those things are real challenges for high school kids especially, because they're just not exactly their defenders. So, uh, it doesn't sound like a lot from. Seven forty-five to eight twenty, but, uh, they'll tell you one more snooze on the button is, is. Big deal. Uh, that's me, you know, I. But I can then run and grab some.
Well, yeah, actually, so if they were being fed breakfast, they would maybe be. Chair.
Well, that's, that's, that's a possibility.
Cause they have a.
In, in the fall, that is a possibility, you know, I think next year that, that, that maybe we can. Get them to come to the cafeteria instead of St. Way. Uh, uh, that's not this year. I'll just chime in and say, you know, daughterhood is a difference. High school certainly, but, um, high school kids do better with a little bit more sleep. And in terms of. I have the same, um. Tardies in the morning, straight across the board, but it's all in that just the family service issues.
Any other questions for our secondary team? We'll, we'll ask Mr. Mr. Wilson.
If you can't stand it, you're hiding.
I, I can't. You need to approach.
Yeah.
I do have one question.
Nobody's been you.
That's just the high degree of the high school.
Sorry, I, I got a question before. So the high schoolers. The one thing that we tell them to get into a vehicle to drive on site and to do. Things that put other members of the community in a potential. Impact, um, has been any? Anything from last year to this year, or can we speak to any of their impacts about them earlier or later for the ones that are driving on site?
I mean, last year we had the same schedule other than fifteen minutes later, and if we added fifteen minutes. Uh, but what certain things would be, right, certain days that they start. Yeah, so I, I can't see anything with that.
I think it's sort of a bit of a construction related.
Yeah.
You'd need for a lot.
I think that's an issue when I'm.
Okay, this is recent, you just love you want to share. Just, just two things, um, one thing I know that, uh. I think if you ask a lot of teachers, we have lots of tardies. I know, I, in my first grade class, and some of these guys were in it, um, we start with about, I started with about. Maybe fifteen kids and then with twenty-five, almost every day. And I think there's a lot of teachers who are likely. Cause they, the kids don't, you know, if they can drive, they're not even wearing the bus. If there are kids who blow in it every day, and that's what I see. And it's worse than it was once. For me, in, in, you know, this historical, certain, I've got a lot of history.
So likely. Upper, upper grades for sure, if they're driving, so.
But that also has more to do with enrichment and then feeling like.
But that's not the morning. I have, I have credit recovery.
Recovery.
But I just, I'm talking about my studies class. That's my studies class, they come in, you know, once they're there, people are on time, so getting there in the morning is a little struggle for lots of. Just, uh, I think if you ask a bunch of teachers, I think that's what they'd say, because we talked a lot about that, we're muted about this. How do you get kids there on time, just say just, they don't wait. And after school, I know that when we used to do bus duty, it was forty minutes you'd bust it. Now they have to do bus duty, do, do, because work, well, first five minutes in and out. But if you're the last one, I don't, I think it doesn't matter where you're at, it's gonna be, people are gonna wait, cause they're gonna be like. You know, we as, as high school teachers, we're all right, now the middle school is what we used to get. There's bus duty in the afternoon, so. Very much, I used my life, but it just wasn't perfect. First fact is you can be out there a long time, but last best, just unlike the. Not so much this, okay, last year long. So just, and I know the coaches, I would speak for the coaches, they, they love going in down early. But they might be doing it once, they like it in homes or eight o'clock after practice. Yeah, just those were my thoughts, cause I just thought I could stand up sharing questions from this recent piece. On the.
That pattern that changes from when we blasted the schedule is our athletic competition. Before, prior to us thinking last schedule. I'm thinking it hasn't been in the past, but like the most recent iteration. Uh, when we ran the schedule, we weren't in the same.
Certainly.
We were doing till enough Seaside, Estoria. Hillsborough. East Portland.
Yeah, that's a piece of. But previous to that.
Correct.
We were in that.
Week, yes.
For the number of transient coaches we have that are not staff members. It's actually a little better if you let them work their day of work a little further. So, uh, they're having to get out. Much earlier than if they were. And that's sometimes for them lost income or loss, it's, can be a real challenge for, to get your staff there that early. I can recall covering for people until they could get there on a regular basis because they had to. Earn a living as they come to coach. So, uh, there is, if you're a teacher, early coaching is good. If you're not already there, it's more of a challenge.
And I don't know if you know, but it's really changed for most of our teachers, our coaches, you know, we're.
Acutely aware, because I've been. On coaching staff where there were no teachers.
That's, that's.
Oh, kind of, yeah, I can do it for like, but we'll just. I just know like. With sports, and I'm sure, like, well, I don't know, have you guys? Looking at this thought about the whole like sporting. Oh, what about games? Cause I know sometimes that is gonna thing, um, because I was looking at it. And we were, when we were talking about at the work session, that was kind of one of the biggest concerns was about the sporting events, actually the games. And I would say. The reassurance on that is that because we have a block scheduling, instead of just a straight six or whatever. It kind of counteracts that when one student starts missing the same classes every time. And they also aren't missing as much class. But, um, my question would be like. Is there anything that? About this that kind of throws you off, who's like, oh, that really wouldn't help it?
Or could mark it out?
Yeah. Um, I'm not sure, but I am, when you were saying that, it did make me think of when I worked in another district. That moved from an early to a later, um, and they, that's what they saw, they ran into the fact, they ended up moving back. Um, because the students do, did have to leave so early, they missed. The final couple periods of the day because they had to leave to go to be competitive with the other. Schools in the area, so that was a huge concern that I think people didn't make out. But yeah, I agree with the blocks, and it wouldn't be consistently, um, missing the same end of the period. But it would eat into some of their destruction.
Any questions for our secondary team? Thank you so much.
Yeah, I can pull student.
Do you give extra credits? I would, I absolutely would like. Not that they roll out, so.
You know, I don't think it's anything.
Five AM start.
That's a lady.
Cause I mean, you know, a blessing question though, could be regardless of whoever it is that starts. Late. If they're getting out at that pretty twenty. Kind of an ambulance tactic, but you do like last minute location, and maybe they can change your three buses. That all know the last couple run, so if they're not just waiting for one, if someone's picking back faster. They need to come over and get those kids so that we don't have a forty minute wait time in.
It, it just would hurry up. The circumstances, because the three to three twenty assumes that. Because the middle school and high school have lower ridership, that they're really just. Going to the middle school, they can't have at the high school, so I'm interested in understanding like forty minutes because a lot of it. At least it's assumed that they were just gonna be through, so unless they were trying to do what was happening last year, but trying to drop off some middle floors to. Make space for high school students, I'd like, I'd like to know more, but that's.
Still late, I think are doing their route to get behind.
I, if you're dropping kids off, they're just gonna be, I think that's for sure.
I, I personally feel forty minutes waiting to meet duty is too long for kids to wait with the bus. Too long for our staff, so that it needs to. Would regardless of, as I said, whatever, and that's like, that's okay.
So it sounds like. The educators. What we have current, say, a little bit of an increase in tardies. The students, they clearly middle school experience and not a significant impact on the high schoolers. The things that, that were done by the. That's what I kind of took out there.
Not, yes, except middle school frustration with. Not able to have meetings in the afternoon, really probably shifting the culture to you meet in the morning, because they have a longer stretch in the morning. Has been a challenge for them.
But that was the one thing.
Yeah.
Counter to, we were. And then the timeframe for the middle schoolers currently. Definitely we should do it without any adjustments to be followed to.
I don't, we'd have to look. There was, there's, yeah, there's a, there's a forty minute window that they're all set on, so. You don't in theory have that forty minutes of students waiting, so we'd have to go back and, and look, see. I, I wonder though if. If by adding one bus would reduce that forty minute wait. That would be, I think, some value with this. We gotta add a dozen buses like over here last time, but that just doesn't. Doesn't make sense. But I think trying to figure out what rest is.
I think my concern too is that we're having these conversations and we, we spent a lot of time on this, we've done a lot of things. The school is not built yet, we have an apartment complex that just came online fully this year, and so. We're trying to just, you know, those other things, I worry. That there's gonna be a lag in some of those other components that then we're gonna have this conversation again, again and again, so. I know the, the one comment that came in outside of this was. Maybe. It's just a thought, because I, frankly, everybody that was all of an honest beginning of this conversation. Reason that we did all this and everything else from the community was like, hey, come on, to do this input. We get used to things once we started that, and if we keep changing or we keep, we'll insert some of the things, it's just gonna fire up. So there is that.
Except for that we can show our middle school times at eight thirty, right? Essentially, that shouldn't matter.
It would shift the entire day, you know.
We, we would move to eight, eight thirty, ten, seven.
But the end of the video is what it is, that's given us problems. So, but it should be, you know, we've got a, we, we figure six and a half for middle, six and a half for elementary hours. Um, so it's like a sliding scale, like if you could add a few more minutes to one or the others.
Well, which would the hot thing do?
One year.
Yeah.
If you're, if we gave them a fifteen.
This is where you solve it, you just make every elementary student build after school, and just show them a program, and then you have all the buses you need for a high school. Nobody gets to go home until like five thirty percent.
Are there any other comments from the board on that? So this, does that seem like a reasonable plan with the board to have? Kind of like a third meeting as the next board meeting? Is that how you'd like to move forward?
And then put it to a vote and be late or, or keep.
I would.
Diet on the change.
We've got, we have, we're kind of in that. Bucking up against time as far as scheduling and passing and all that type of thing. Uh, so I would, I would suggest. We make a decision that we already. And we go to the board meeting, is that the work session?
So.
I don't think it means. So it's pretty interesting action.
No.
During an internal, like, we need to add drivers or routes, there's specific teams.
Okay, okay.
I recall board training, they asked a specific question about things like this. Is opening this school a board decision or not? Is required of this? The answer was, for now. Your job is pause. The bus schedule, although it's good for us to discuss, it's good for us to be informed. It's not really truly a board action. It's in fact, an administrative decision that is made among the team that you have, and that's what we hired you to do. And so I just kind of wanna bring that up because a lot of people want to. Have this be a big board deal and. It is good for us to discuss it because it's us to, it's our job to listen to the public, to get the input. I not really have formal hearings, but it's our job to listen. It's our job to encourage people and help them and provide the, the resources and money that you need or pass your budget. But it's really not our decision to micromanage your schools, uh, your schedules, uh, what you're doing. That's not our job.
Opening it and that is money where it starts.
Will pass the budget, but, hey, yeah, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, because we have many changes to the bell schedule in the past. Without it being a board vote, we're bringing the board, however, when we made our last changes. Um, when the community brings it to the board and says we have a concern, that's when we work together, that's him, you know, and as you said. I get paid to work with my staff to do that, make that decision, but we have a board that is community representing. And so if you want to take action on it, you can, uh. Or we can have it one more time up there and then you can point to me and say now, you make the decision that I'm happy to.
We, we will support the general way of those and. And sometimes you're more comfortable with it. I'd like a board action on this, so it's very. Just, for our students here and things like that, what is the job of the school board, and that's part of what you're here to discover. And so the public is. And what is our job and how do we do things, and, and that's part of it is. To hire competent help and let them help us make good decisions, because we're not the educators, we're. Actually. I, I, I voted on citizens that, uh, hire professionals to help us out. So. But we, we can make a final say. But we don't necessarily do that, and that's confusing very often to the public, so people run, I'm gonna, you know, the school board. Well, actually, you're not.
You can't, but you're only one step.
You know, when it suits, uh, either that. Disaster happens in some districts where our whole community get on and decide. That really aren't the job.
Good news, we've been through training and understand our. I think we need to have this on a school. Meeting, begin public, so sure we'll have an opportunity. Another discussion.
Yeah, I mean, there will be more conversations, for sure, based on our help.
Well, I, and I would say I think if you're first meeting here besides. Like the last meeting, it's just us that were in the room, but the bus are rich now, so. Uh, we're not a place understanding the reasons for how each decision was made, but um, I was gonna tell you that this morning, because I'm always helping. I was gonna flag you over there, make right, and I had a, had a few parents that were late this morning. They had actually never dropped off before. And the person that's telling them to drop off said eight, well, they thought eight was the starting time to drop off. Not the school started time at eight o'clock, and then they wanted to even know, well, what time can they drop off, and I said, well, seven forty for breakfast or seven forty-five for school? Oh, okay, well, we'll be on time tomorrow. But it changes, and just when we think we found, it's got it triggered out, then they send somebody else to drop off again, you know, so. Anyway, so sometimes it's not late, you go to the same kids' block, it is not always that, and sometimes they have different rides, different people transferring them. And we don't exactly localize the exact time they should be arriving at the building too, so. There's various reasons, like it delays, not only always weeks of starting. You know, it's like you try for a perfect world, she knows that, and she says, so when do we run, she's not perfect. No matter what I do, so anyway, I know we'll be running to this one forever, I hope, thank you, it is absolutely perfect. The only thing I did want to say is to scout, just know that we're sending parents later through their channel when they start, it's gonna get worse there. That's where it's gonna affect is us leaving later, is eight thirty is their starting time, so our parents are all dragging through.
There are times, it's at seven forty-five, when the light comes on and then everybody just stops.
Yeah.
So.
They might be at our next work meeting by some. All right, well, that everything, are, are we good for tonight? All right, well, then let's go to seven, which is visitors to address important, this is time for public comment on agenda. Do we have anything else? Everybody, no requests? All right, so then we're gonna go on to eight point O, which is not just, which is eight point one four depreciation proclamation.
So this is where we make it official, get to read the whereabouts. All right. Are you ready? I feel like I should stand, it's gonna be a draw, maybe something here. Twenty twenty-four school board recognition proclamation. Whereas, school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do. Whereas, school boards establish clear standards for student performance. Whereas, school boards ensure that student assessments are tied to established standards. Whereas, school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement. Whereas, school boards align school district resources to ensure that students meet standards. Whereas, school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels. Whereas, school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountabilities. And whereas, school boards are committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement. Now, therefore, we hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the St. Allen School Board. And proclaim the month of January to be school board recognition month. We urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members. Preparing today's students for morals.
Twenty-two years already. All right, I think it's time for that, so I'm gonna give you a draft. All right, well, so then I will go on to nine point, oh, which is my first, I mean, I want to make sure that the board remembers that on Valentine's. I swear.
Well, we're all making envelopes, and hey, you know, here, and we have.
Yeah, I keep trying, I think we have this discussion on this, or we even know, not really sure we know. Get my first, Christie, definitely. I think we were very bad last night. I keep thinking we did, yes, but okay, I think we all said, okay, we're hard. All right, well, other than that, and I think if everybody's good, then we're gonna go to ten, okay, and we are journeying this week. Thanks for coming here.